Welcome, everybody. To April 9th, 2024, meeting of the ZDA, Department of Appeals. My name is Bobby Akins. I'm the chairman, vice chairman, director of Saturday, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Chin, Mr. Frank, or Mr. O'Brien, board members, a new board member, Ms. Dari is in the back. Just came on two meetings ago. Stop clerk. Ms. Griffin. So if you have a cellphone, would you please put on side rate? Or silent? Don't interrupt the meeting with a phone. And if you want to talk, please step outside. It's hard enough to hear you today. The Director of Special Services behind me, Mr. Conlon. Anyone gonna speak tonight? If anyone is gonna testify, or you think you might testify, please stand up and take an oath. If you think you might testify, everyone. You're not a lawyer, please stand up.
Do your solemnest swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter. I'm here. Yes, thank you.
So I understand that whole row is not gonna testify tonight? Is that correct? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's get back to new business. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, motion away, except the way the reading admitted from previously scheduled meetings of March 26th, 2024.
Second. On the motion, seeing that all in favor. All right. Post, so move. We have a lot on the menu, so if you could be specific and brief. New business, ZDA 2410 and ZDA 2411. Albertine Assets LLC for variance to remove the existing house and construct two duplex style townhomes on the premises 66 Albertina and Albertina Assets LLC for variance to remove the existing house and construct two duplexes townhomes on the premises 62 Albertina. And I understand one project really, all correct, counsel?
That's correct. And when I, and Mr. Chairman, just for the record, when I discussed this with the Building Department, they recommended that I file it as two separate applications, although the board could certainly hear it as one.
We'll have it as one because it's one property.
Right. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board, for the record. My name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Albertina Assets LLC. I'm joined tonight by Cindy Zhu, who is the manager of Albertina Assets LLC, also by David Freed from Chu and Associates and Chi Man of Hardy Man Design. As we talked about, these are two separate buildings, but they are two separate lots, but they're right next to each other. 62 Albertina and 66 Albertina. Both of these properties have homes that currently exist and that were built fronting on Albertina, hence why they utilize the address of Albertina. As although the lots go from Albertina all the way through to Branch Street. So they have frontage both on Branch Street and on Albertina. But the homes, because they front on Albertina, utilize those two addresses. They're improved, as I indicated, by two single-family houses. One property has a single-family house that large barn back, while the other has a single-family home and an in-ground pool in the rear. Albertina Assets acquired this a few years ago and prepared this application and discussed with the Planning Board about a year, a year and a half ago, and then was withdrawn and some changes were made to the plan. And this application now has been heard by the Planning Board and site plan approval has been granted, along with a parking waiver granting the parking relief. The proposal that's before you tonight is essentially to remove the existing single-family houses and improvements on the property and utilize both Albertina and also utilize Branch Street to construct four new duplex-style homes. Two of those homes, duplex-style homes, will be fronting on Albertina, while the other two will front on Branch Street. And each property are, properties on Albertina and the properties on Branch will be serviced by a separate driveway from both Branch and Albertina that will provide access to parking underneath the townhouse-style units. Those townhouses will each be provided four spaces, so a total of eight spaces for the two townhouses on Albertina and the two townhouses on Branch. When this was initially filed with the Planning Board, there were some concerns because the roadway actually cut through both from Albertina to Branch Street and modification of the plan eliminated that cut through so that any of the traffic associated with this proposal from Branch would only impact Branch Street, while the traffic associated with the two duplexes on Albertina would only affect those two homes. Through the assistance of the City Council, Jim Devine, we had an opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting and share this proposal with the neighborhood. And quite frankly, it was well received. There were very few people that came to the meeting. Then one of the neighbors who lived more proximate to Albertina raised some questions and about the proposal, but at the end of the day, I think was quite pleased. Rather than be explaining the details of this proposal, what I'd like to do is have first David Freed kind of walk through the architectural plans and then have Chi Man talk about the site-related plans. We think it's a great proposal. This is an 18,540 square foot parcel, so it's quite a large, I mean altogether, these parcels are 18,500 square feet. So it's quite large for the proposed units that are being created here. The two houses on Albertina and the two houses on Branch. So with that, and then I'll come back and I'll just talk about the relief that we're requesting and the grounds for that. So David?
I need to take this free.
Put it straight up to your phone.
And please still take it to the local.
That's. Take it. Top.
This is an image from Google Maps of our site. And you can see the two fifteen houses here. One has Google Maps. Albertina, the two houses on Albertina. And then Branch Street, the improved portion ends here, and then this is unapproved. There are just some images of the existing condition of both Albertina and Branch Street. Here's the back of the lot, the seat for Branch. These are parcels taken from the PGIS. So on the site plan, we have two duplexes from the Albertina. We have two duplexes from the Branch Street. Each served by a shared garage court with access to garage spaces for each property. The. This will be here. Talking about the existing house, this will be actually sets on the same side where the existing house is gonna be one down. These mother two have ten foot sideburn setbacks and this has fourteen and half sideburn setback. The front, these houses align with the other houses on Albertina. And these houses are set back about eight feet from Branch Street. All four houses are the same essentially, except for how they meet craving. Because the sidewalk occupations are almost identical.
You have a question, when you're pulling in that garage, you got twenty-two feet here from right, twenty-one feet something, twenty-two feet?
Twenty-two feet between the two buildings.
I know it takes twenty-five to get into a garage like that. And you got eight feet on the front and you got fourteen on the other side. Can't we move these buildings two feet each way? And you got twenty-six feet in the middle, you're gonna get in the garage?
Yep, you can certainly move them.
That's all right. This, the swing, I just don't see it happening.
This is our third floor plan here. Each, each unit has its own entrance. So Unit 1 enters here, goes up to the second floor. Unit 2 has the long gallery here, that stair up to the second floor. And then the front, the bay area is done with one unit facing the front and one unit facing the rear yard. You can see there are large garages, each with two parking spaces. All of them get up to the second floor with a large kitchen, kitchen, mechanical utility, and a very diverse living and dining area, even with a small deck. There's no neighbors. The outdoor has three bedrooms and two baths. This is our Albertina elevation. And below here is the rear elevation of those two duplexes. The elevations are pre-both similar materials, you know, these things along. Like any residential property, lap siding, you know, red lorrins and the same trim details. But we wanted to sort of give it a kind of contemporary, some panels, some new different colors. Just to increase the look of the neighborhood. This is our Branch Street elevation. You can see how different the grade is from the other one. And then that's of that elevation of those two houses. This is a site section cut through from Albertina down to Branch. And this came here. And then these are site steps cut through across the course. And you can see we have painted them all, so that'll be heard because of the difference in grades. And a trip to the presentation for the architects. We don't have any questions?
Yeah, no, you can't go through those buildings. You're gonna be, they're gonna be separate, so they can't go from one to the next, correct?
Correct.
What are you gonna do for snow removal?
We have areas in the grand court for snow removal.
Where?
I think Chi Man will take us through that.
That was my question. Anyone have any other question?
No, I'm gonna thank you for smelling.
So Brian, does it smell? It don't smell. Don't snow anymore then. We got thirteen feet. Forty-seven million dollars.
I recognize Chi Man from Happy Night Design Group, who's involved in the other projects. Who is a focus where society is evenly distributed, private colony and also the highway. Just a layout plan of the site very similar to the architectural presentations. Again, the comments of our private work, we can shift the building and then we can decide if we extend the joint for the food drive aisle that we standard would buy as tolling. We have, we have roles shifted in each side.
I'm looking for twenty-six, so I think you shift that.
Well, we can. Inside. We're working on the existing site topography. Sign, but quite a bit. It is a big, correct? Better? So the site elevation drop point is on the front on Albertina side, where we have thirty-one to sixty. So it's a steep grade on the roadway and on the Branch Street side, we move from thirty-one down to forty-five. So our design is not to change the site grading so much, it's just to work with the natural topography. So we tear us down, work the retaining wall on each side, and it's a couple steps on the retaining wall. So you can, you can walk down the slope, but it's no vehicle access to get through from the Albertina to Branch Street. As far as stormwater, we have a stormwater management system on each of the parking lots. So a roof drain and the parking drain will be captured by the trans drain and also roof drain go direct into the contact system. They will be treated by storm sector for water quality and then go down to the filtration system. Pretty much the same design on the lower part of the site. And thus we size the system that we use for the storm runoff and peak rate and also volume, which are the same for four. Two years, ten years, forty-four, twenty-five years, and it is designed that we are lowering the both the peak rate and the volume of the site, so there's no stormwater impact to any of the neighbors. Also on the roadway, this is where the existing roadway improvement ends when we are bringing a driveway into the site. So we also have in a couple catch basing and for the underground filtration system right here. So we're capturing all the runoff on the roadway as the driveway as well. Utilities, water surface, but this two building will come in from the branch side. There's an existing water mainboard on the way up to the ground property. And on Albertina side, we have a separate water connection on these two buildings. Standards here, they all come from the sewer surface connection right on the Albertina side. There's the Branch Street, the sewer surface is a couple hundred feet away. So we're connecting way around these locations.
All the connections to Sewell will be in Albertina, you say?
Yes.
How far you building that road that, I got a four-by Jeep and I wouldn't walk there. I went halfway and stopped.
The first portion where I get getting into my driveway is actually.
Yeah, you're gonna go past that so they can turn?
Yes.
Not just a road gas with that driveway?
Yes, from this point on, this really take up, uh, pretty steep all the way go up to the front on this side. So we are understanding, I would say, about fifty feet of the existing patch of the pavement into our site driveway.
Fifty feet, that end, it ends at the lot, right, the lot line? The beginning of the lot line, if it ends, correct?
Yes.
It's fifty, that's it?
Yeah, that's it. And the ventral, we have a whole site with break in on the ventilation.
Yeah.
Any location part of that branch. Let's go back to the. Layout sheet. So we have some landscape area that on the snowy day will be pushing the snow into the landscape area. And also we have in the operation that made us plan snow, any excesses though, it's going to be managed by the management company, which is going to be off-site disposal.
All right, now, these are condos, correct?
Yes.
So they're gonna have their own condo association when they, when they buy these. They'll make their own. So they will have snow removal in there.
Yes. And like I think, as mentioned, that this site is going to be combined one lot. We already have a lot concerned with the present, but when we pull up broad, then we're through about that.
Any questions? So Brian?
To clarify?
No, 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 we'll speak, you can't speak.
Okay.
Not until we get this. Can you sit up front?
And I just have a couple, just a final, final kind of wrap-up comments. So what, as I indicated, the Planning Board has reviewed this. This was reviewed by peer review.
That's fine, and we understand that.
And it was reviewed by the city's DPW department. And I only raise that, Mr. Chairman, because you raised some questions about the continuation of the roadway, the access point. And we talked with DPW about that. And because of the topography change, they felt that that was a good recommendation and they were satisfied and happy with that. The other thing I just wanted to say, this is, as you, as you know, in your, in your dealings and certainly the background of the city, there was a new rezoning overlay district that was enacted that was actually a part of this whole community. It ended in a kind of a strange way at Branch Street. And Branch Street and a lot of that area is all zoned industrial, A. This particular location is residence, B. What, what my client wanted to do is really mimic the homes that are kind of in that neighborhood on Branch Street and also on Albertina, hence why he's proposing this style development in that location. If you go further down Albertina, you'll see that there's larger townhouse-style buildings down there. He didn't feel that that was appropriate in this particular location, nor did he feel like one building was gonna be a good solution to the site. He felt that these style buildings really fit in much better with the neighborhood. And just finally, we will, this lot will be merged into one lot. It will become part of a condominium association. It will incorporate all of your comments and all of the comments of the Planning Board in ensuring that issues like snowplow and maintenance and things of that nature will all be part of it, including with the operation and maintenance plan as part for the stormwater management system.
It'll be one condo association?
It'll be one condominium association and each owner will be a member or an owner of that condominium association because they'll have to maintain the exterior of that site altogether, including the rear of the site, but also the storm automatic management systems as well as other matters. Thank you.
So Brian?
Okay, my, my question is, you're coming down on Branch, but you're turning into the driveway.
Yes.
How, how much of the width of Branch are you, are you covering? You're covering the entire length of it, the entire width?
The width is going to be the same width of what the existing pavement is in the.
Existing pavement and the existing street is that wider?
Uh, it's the same width of the existing street.
We're gonna maintain the exact width of this finished portion of Branch Street.
All right, and you're with sidewalks in front of our project?
There's no sidewalks here, but it's gonna be repaired and redone along, along Albertina. But they, but the Planning Department indicated that since sidewalks don't exist, the rest of Branch Street, they didn't recommend that we do so here. So no.
You're gonna pay the same width as Branch Street currently is?
Right.
And you knows that, is that the width of the, of the width itself? Is that paid from, from?
The layout question is thirty-six feet. So the existing pavement is eighteen feet wide. So we're gonna maintain the existing eighteen feet pavement width.
It's thirty-six, all right.
It was laid out, it was thirty-six, but it'll be eighteen.
So you're only doing eighteen, eighteen feet wide that holds cap?
Right, right.
Yeah, I think the thought process from, from the planning department, I guess, this is within the TOP district, but there's gonna be some thickly, uh, projects coming in. There will be opportunity for them to.
Yeah, I think, I think this weekend, this weekend is four hundred and sixty-five minutes that you earned it. I don't know with this body, but with certain with the planning board, actually sits right here on this. So what, you think it's new on Branch and all the way up to one section? One other question, you said that the water, the water for Crown Colony comes up Branch?
Yes. It's pavement street, but the water, that's still water.
It's just water?
Water.
Water is the only thing that comes up Branch Street, the service?
Yes.
Yeah, but you have to have sewer on Branch, where is it?
It's not, it's on the other side. In Albertina.
Existing, the existing sewer on Branch Street is. But they're gonna carry it under the property all the way up to Albertina?
Yeah, even.
It says a hundred, three hundred feet down the street.
The townhouse you're right next to existing, their connection is actually going to Albertina, rural instrument.
Is there any sewer on Branch?
It's about a hundred fifty feet up.
So how far is that?
Close to the center, yeah, place the center.
Mid block of the street.
And you don't know where the sewer is?
Well, no, but it's the.
How about the sewer around Colony outside?
I think all on that Crown Colony.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Did we get that? Yeah, Mr. Chin?
Um, your site setback at sixty-six Albertina, it's one point eight feet. You'd be widening the driveway by some number of feet to accommodate your request. Will you be going beyond that one point eight side setback? Or are you gonna take the space from sixty-two Albertina side where you have twenty-two, twenty-two rate side and ten foot side?
Well, the setback I'm referring to on this front is the combined line. I think the one point eight is twenty, we have the existing lot line in the middle. So this, so it's the side now setback by now what we're showing is a one-two on this side and ten feet on, on the other side. So the grass, if we move the building over, there'll be losing two feet on this side.
It did get complicated, Mr. Chairman, because we had to split, even though it's one proposal, we had to split the two lots into two separate applications. That's why the setback is shown that way. Because the setback, the line of sixty-two to sixty-six is right around here.
Yeah, this is the whole, the existing property line by that line.
It's nice.
But they'll be merged in one parcel.
Thank you, guys. No.
Thank you.
No, sir? I can't see. Is anyone like speaking favor? Anyone here to speak in favor, first of all?
Could I ask a question, please?
You can speak in favor or you'll have time if you're opposed or undecided later. What's your question, ma'am?
The question is, if that is the needs meant from the grass up to the first floor with the brick from the back, is, is that spent?
All right, we'll let you ask that question and undecided, because you're gonna have to get involved.
Okay.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? You've got, name an address for the record up here, please. Microphone, come on, the microphone's up here. Microphone's right here.
Yeah, just a quick note, I think this is a good thing for Queens in general, given the amount of living space that is required on the city. Dividing that in a manner that actually gives an opportunity for more, more people to own a house and is properly developed, that is actually, it is a good thing to do. The only thing we need to ensure is that as the water flows in these heavy rainy seasons, to ensure there is proper drainage on the street, so that the water doesn't go into the house. Manuel Barroso, Thirty-three Village Drive, I'm a board member of the Crown Colony in the Jewish.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Third call? Call I've had hearing closed? You're letting him on both, you give the above-referenced project and have no comments. That's the DPW report, so I guess they've worked with the DPW already and straightened out anything they had for questions and cities all set. Is there anyone opposed on the side? You can step up then. Mr. Chairman, if you could swear, and please raise your right hand, take an oath just to tell the truth, tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Name an address for the record?
My name is Vivian Swilder Borick. I live at ninety-four New Berry Ave.
Very good.
I've been, I've been there longer since Tom Pope's been in the Congress. All right. Personally, I have, I love environmental design. I love having things look good and be able to function well. And I think personally, and I've studied accordingly. I think personally, this view is, I think it's attractive for this cluster of houses. I, I like that there's a little variation in the design so that they're not just, you know, barracks. My, my question, my question is, before I vote, other than that, is that, when does, is the, is the cellar, is that a cellar that is half above the ground or a quarter above the ground and, and below the ground that is indicated by what looks like gray or spongy?
Yeah, just that. That's actually a foundation wall, but it's not a basement.
A basement, right?
It's not a basement, so it doesn't go under the ground?
It does go under the ground, but our garage is there.
The elevator.
Basically, the, of this water table. So this is just, this is just a foundation wall going down there.
Okay, and I assume the other side are, are similar, they have the other two on the right?
Yes, and because the grade has changed so much.
Okay.
The very little foundation we posed here, but we can't walk.
Okay, well, my comment and suggestion, there is a corner of, behind Applebee's, a big house that was built over a smaller house about ten years ago. And it looks like this from the nice, but on the side, there's this big garage wall. And it's very, and in the front, when you walk by it, so from a pedestrian's point of view, and I think even from an air. and I think even from an air point of view, when you walk by it, it's, it's unattractive. And all you need, if, if you're not going to build it lower in the ground, is bushes or something. And I'm, so I'm just saying, really, it looks very nice, but, but a few, ten years later, this, this building, this multiplexed house on, off of Kendall Street, it doesn't, it's not pleasant to walk by. Simply the.
This gray is what matters.
So I, I would like to, I, I totally would vote, I know the housing problem, Quincy, but I would like to bring some attention to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, hey, you have a landscaping plan anywhere that's on?
We can certainly, we can certainly look to add some landscaping.
Maybe you can explain to her what you're going to do. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Step forward, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Damian Long. Address is sixty-eight Albertina. So the.
You have, you have the floor.
Bordering property. I, I may have missed this detail, a few clarifying questions. How far was the extension of the roadway up Branch Street that was proposed?
To the second driveway. So if the second driveway goes through in the middle of those, it comes out, it's going to be eighteen feet wide all the way to the end.
Does it extend anywhere up to where, beyond?
No.
No, it's about forty feet up to the, to both driveways.
To the, to the driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to end.
So we access the.
It will not go through, it will not go through to Albertina.
Not go through to Albertina, and it won't extend further up into?
Not to you.
Not to me at all?
No.
Probably, yeah, it's probably twenty-five feet from the end of your property line.
Okay.
Looking at the map right there.
Yeah, thank you, that's important. Next, the current property at sixty-six is very close to us. And I really don't know much about this at all, but the demolition, I imagine, what does that look like? How long does it take? Is there assurance that that doesn't overflow into our property at all, especially considering how close it is to our house?
They will make sure that, if you want, we can have someone take a video and if anything happens to your house, that'll be fixed.
Okay, and the timeline for that, how long about the demolition?
Depends when they start. I couldn't give you those answers. That, that could be, I don't know, when financing gets done, everything, I don't know, it could be three months now, six months.
The actual process of demolition.
I mean, the process of demolition.
I don't know, it depends on the contractor they hire, who does this?
Sure it's quick.
It's going to be quick, it's real, it'll be three, four days.
It'll be about two weeks to a month, the demolition of the property. And there's a demolition permit that needs to be applied for, and that has certain actions we need to.
For the neighbors.
Okay, and there's sort of, there's things for us to sign or, or no?
The, the, for the applicant.
The applicant has to sign.
Yes, he has to go on a line by certain requirements.
Okay, alright.
And you can call Mr. Conlon, he'd love to have a chat with you.
Can I write down the name just quickly, go. Okay, those, those were my, my two clarifying questions.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Third call? No one in the room. Step up, name and address for the record when you get here.
My name is Shrikan.
Say again, we're going to hear you in the mic.
My name is Shrikan.
Yeah.
I live in fifty-six Albertina Street, very close to the property.
Did you get sworn in, sir?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, you're in the back.
So this is my first time, I asked silly question, don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
So the first question is, our property is pretty close to this property. In case if they are doing any demolition, the house is very big, it's world, I believe. I have two little kids in my home, any, when they are doing that stuff, any, like a lead content going out or kind of stuff, will be that taken care?
So again, like there's a, there's a whole process that the city has to adhere, or that the applicant has to adhere to when they're demoing any building. So they have to file a permit, they have to, you know, get the permitting done for what they're, what Mr. Conlon will hold them to. So there's a, there's a whole process to, to prevent any damage to your residence.
And if there was, it would be fixed.
And it would be on the applicant to, to fix your property in any way.
And one more question, like recently I installed like some solar roof on my top.
Yep.
How, how high this new building is going to be, is that going to block my?
Thirty-one feet, what, what?
You're above, right?
Are you above them?
No, down.
Two up?
Like, this is the sixty-six, yeah, we are like little, little closer here.
So on the other side of Whedon?
Yeah, like if it is the, the new building going to happen here, it's my building.
So you're across the street and?
No, like same, same.
Oh, first beginning below, sorry, I was, here's.
What?
Is this us?
Oh.
So it's thirty-one, yeah, you're below. What are they?
Thirty-one feet.
Thirty-one feet, I need to check with my solar company, then is it going to give me any issues? And other question might be a silly one. So when they are demolishing the underground pipes, is that going to impact my house, like when they are?
Shutting anything off?
Yeah, do I need to do that stuff?
No.
No, they'll take care of it.
They cap everything at the street level for that house? So there would be no impact like your water?
That's what's going to leak on your house and that'll all be shut off in the street.
It's all shut off just for that direct profit off of the entire street.
Okay, so, and another question, when they're going to build or when they're going to demolish, are they going to work on the daytime or nighttime?
So it's only two, we have.
Daytime working out.
Yeah. The daytime hours?
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
So if you see somebody in there after, you just call Mr. Conlon and he comes up, finds them. No, yeah, so no, they have seven to five, Monday through Saturday?
Saturday to five.
Saturday's eight to five, so, Monday through Friday, seven to five, Saturday eight to five.
Oh, thank you so much, and there, there is no lead content or something, gas come out, out, out of that, no?
No, they, that, that's all well protected.
Alright, thank, thank you.
No.
Thank you so much. No, I have two small children in the house.
No, no, you're saying there isn't accidents in the world, right? We've seen them, right?
Yeah.
Three fell down and took out their propane tanks, see that? Took out the house and the girl.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Last call? Call upon the hearing closed. You know, I, I, my, my, my. I really was sitting on Albertina when I was up there. Before I went on the other side and went up.
Branch.
Branch Street, it didn't look like the property that big. It's huge, it's huge. And it really is long and there's plenty of room for these projects, and I think they're going to look really good. You know, snow removal and the movement of the, of the building to give me, I'll tell you what, I want twenty-five feet, and I'm going to put it in there, twenty-five feet between the buildings. You make sure you get that turn. If that turn doesn't work for any reason, it, it, the project ain't going to work. They have to turn into their, their riders. They're not going to park in front of their place because there's people trying to get a neighbor out, so it wouldn't work, so. And you'll be having the street, it would be a mess. So if you can give us twenty-five feet, I'll be up between the buildings. And the snow removal. Huh? Regardless of the. God, listen, whichever way, they got to move that building to make it work, and just do the best they can. I'd say a couple feet in each, one, one and a half on each side will make it work. And then the snow removal will be in there too. Anything else, Kelly?
I think it's a unique lot with topography and where it sits and, you know, to the point of, if Albertina was included in the D U D, we'd be sitting here looking at a massive project. And so, you know, I, I think they did a good job at improving areas with, with, nice, look like nice buildings. I'll be in favor.
If someone favors, well, I don't know whether you want to include the landscaping as a component.
Yeah, the landscaping plan through by Mr. Conlon would be, would be in there too.
Correct.
Okay, council?
That's fine.
Yeah, I, I think it's a vast program, I would say. Council, were you there a while ago with the same project, do you mean at the mall?
I, I was not representing, um, yeah, but I believe it was presented as, or was discussed.
Nothing like that.
No, and they, and they withdrew because there was concern about the cut through.
Cut through?
And, and I know that probably some of the neighbors in Albertina had raised that concern, because they didn't want to have traffic coming onto their street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion please.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to do two separate ones?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Z B A twenty-four dash ten Albertina Assets LLC for a variance to remove the existing house and construct, construct two new duplex style townhomes on the premise number sixty-six Albertina Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance with the subjectivities of twenty-five feet between buildings as well as landscaping plan and snow removal plan. Second.
On the motion, stand then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or moved?
Mr. Chairman, Z B A twenty-four.
One minute, uh, I just want to, I want, I want to take a moment here.
Conditions, I.
If, if, if we could just take one moment here, gentlemen, we need to vote on the clerk, so I'm, I'm going to spend the regular business and let's, let's have a vote for our clerk. I'd like to make a motion, I know Noreen was here and she came back and we made her the clerk, but now, now we got to do it again and, and it's, and it's time that. Kathleen Griffin, I'd like to make a motion that we make Kathleen Griffin on the court.
Say.
Any discussion? Is, is one person, is there any more?
Nominees.
Nominees, any more nominees, second time, any more nominees, third time? I'd like to cast one, one, one ballot for Ms. Griffin, she's on the court. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or moved? Thank you very much, gentlemen, I'm going to leave the meeting.
Why don't I vote on the?
Thank you. Any other clerk, huh?
Where you go anyway?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry. What are you doing?
One United. Get away from them. Mr. Chairman, Z B A twenty-four.
I was wanting to grab the first before we left, I go, I do, we get some clerk. I was about to do that earlier.
Mr. Chairman, Z B A twenty-four dash eleven Albertina Assets LLC for a variance to remove the existing house and construct two new duplex style townhomes, townhomes on the premise number sixty-two Albertina Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance with the conditions.
I've stated before.
Of twenty-five feet between buildings, uh, snow removal plan and landscape plan.
On the motion, stand then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or moved?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Word?
Mr. Chairman, if we can guarantee you some word. Absolutely not. Don't get it.
Don't. Yeah. What's the one we have? It's fine, it's fine.
The second seat is probably, I have to read the D P W report. He got some wish.
Well, I can clear off for a second.
Do we have one with like a four page D P W? John, I can really hit it, don't hit me. First time I did it, I ran out of breath.
Okay, Z B A twenty-four dash twelve, Zoo Zhao Ping for a variance filing to convert the existing single family home into a two family home on the premise number ninety-one Hamden Circle, Quincy. It's the applicant or the representative here. Counselor, how are you?
Good, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, I'm the attorney for ninety-one Hamden Circle. I'm joined here today by Julian Calaruso from Advanced Builders. Our architect got sick today, so he's not going to be here, so Julian will walk us through his design. Ninety-one Hamden Circle is currently a single family home located in the Residential B zoning district. It's just under seven thousand square feet. Applicant is seeking to change the single family home into a two family home with five parking spots. Residential B allows the multifamily homes in that district. And I know, obviously, I know you guys do a really good job of, you know, doing your homework on, on the neighborhood, but I just want to kind of paint the picture of what's going on in Hamden Circle. Ninety-one Hamden Circle is actually one of the biggest lots on the street. The street is a mix of, uh, single families, two families, three families, there's even a four family on the street too. And just in comparison, I know a handful of the two families are on under five thousand square feet lots. There's a three family that's on five thousand square feet lots, and the four family is sixty-five hundred. So the two family that we're looking to do is actually bigger than all those lots on the street. I'm going to have Julian walk through the design of the building and then I'm going to talk about what variances we're looking for.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Julian, that's about seven with Advanced Building. The architect couldn't make it tonight, so I'll walk you through.
Your address, please, just for the record.
Along the same circle.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, I'd be happy to do my best to answer all those questions and I'll best inform you of what we're planning to do. So, as you know, ninety-one Hamden Circle, right now, you know, we have about two thousand square foot existing floor area, forty-two nine F A R. We're looking to propose to add about nineteen hundred square feet with an F A R of forty-five seven. Just give you kind of a look at the proposed with the existing. Here you have a look at the existing elevations, north, south, east, west. Just kind of shows you what, what is there now. The next side here, showing the proposed. So we can see from the front view, that's pretty much what we're proposing to add. The unit that we're adding is going to be about four bedrooms, right now existing is three bedrooms, kitchen, living room, dining room, you know, a front entryway that has access to both units. Again, another elevation of the proposed, of the existing. Here's the floor areas. You got existing grocery area of the first unit, three bedrooms, dining room, kitchen, living room, garage. As Pat mentioned, we're adding quite a bit of parking spaces so that everyone, that could be accommodated, that the need is met. Here you have the proposed area, like I mentioned, the four bedrooms. That's the existing three bedrooms on the unit one. Unit two proposed, kitchen, living room, dining room, entry common area. And this is the existing first unit that has kitchen, dining room, living room as well. Any questions?
I just want to add, so the variances we're looking for, going from one to two units, so we're going to need F A R variance. The frontage variance that we're looking for is actually pre-existing non-deforming. That's going to be going from seven feet to five feet. And as for the parking, you know, we're going from two spots to five now, which will satisfy that requirement. In, in comparison to everything else on the street, these multis, they don't offer a lot of parking, so it's, I think it's good for the neighborhood that we're offering more parking. And I just want to add that this home is actually owner occupied right now too, so.
Yeah, the, the plan also is my client, his president, he has a large family, so they're looking to increase, and I know it's a decent amount of space, but due to the circumstance of the existing neighborhood, we felt that this isn't unreasonable, but obviously we'll refer to your knowledge and experience. But like I said, he's looking to increase some square footage for his first family, his father. They have a lot of grandkids, so that's a big reason why they're proposing this. No questions?
How many, how many vehicles are existing?
Three.
Then you're going to have four in the new unit?
Two.
So it'll be a total of seven?
Yes.
But only five parking spaces?
Sure. Yes, yes. What about the garage? Are you leaving it?
Garage is staying, right?
Yes, garage stays, sir. I did, is it ideal for a car in the garage?
Yeah, you could get an extra car in the garage.
You could get a car in it, and then there's also parking in the driveway for, for all units proposed.
I think with the garage, you could get an extra spot there easily, yes.
Whatever, the issue I'm having with it is it's two separate structures connected with it.
Please.
Really, it's not.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was going to ask that. What was the reason for that? What was the reason for, I mean, essentially you're building a second home of it?
Um, I can't specifically give you a reason, I'm not the architect, but I think that his discussions with the owner was that they felt that that was the best way to accommodate the square footage that they're trying to add. And that was the best.
What, I mean, was there any, and, did, any reason why the house is angled like that? Pat, as well, to get five feet on that front left corner?
Um, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask? Just a comment on this here, would, would this meet the requirement for a two-family? I mean, the way that it defined, as a, which is like a breezeway in between them, and as opposed to them joining and.
They would connect, they would meet the definition.
Just with the breezeway. And would there be any instance where the breezeway could be removed and even separated to two lots?
Separated to two lots?
Yes.
I'm just saying. That's what I wanted to know.
It's something like a lot of, you know, what I'm saying, maybe, where you, where technically what they're doing, other than.
That's what they do.
Yeah, they're gonna pre, pretty much, they could do it, right? I'm like, I don't know.
You'd still need the variances for this.
We wouldn't remove the breezeway.
I think we could discuss that as another option, um, I think we, I think we thought things a lot more, um, uh, obstacles and a lot more things to be forgiven as far as we built the homes, single-family homes.
Actually, you'd have to write that.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, possibly subdivided, you'd be putting two single-family homes of thirty-three hundred square feet. And we, that, that would, that wouldn't fly up there, I know that. And then when we looked at the multifamilies on the street, we looked at the multifamilies we had with our lot size, and, and like I said, it's, it's the biggest lot size on the whole street, you know, and there's a lot of houses on that street.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not particularly just trying to regularize my, that I could come along in five or ten years, put a lot line in there, take that breezeway out, and I can come over.
But you'd still have to go through the subdivision process.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, theoretically, yeah.
Uh, the, the, um, if you remove the breezeway, I think that they're no longer to be, um, they're not two families, so.
Right, you'd have to go through a whole subdivision process.
So I know, I know, I'm just saying that you've already built on it, and then you just come back and do that, as opposed to some divide that then built. I don't have a problem with.
No, the, the, the two, we, we know that, that's not a good project, and we would never bring that up, yeah.
What I'm saying is that.
You might not.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, what are you proposing as far as the water and sewer lines? Are you, what have you envisioned? Are you looking to do new connections for the addition, or are you feeding off the existing?
So we would probably defer to the building department and, um, say what they recommend for, um, as far as requirements on what we're adding for bathrooms, um, if the existing water lines can be added to the, the new unit, or if we have to run new ones, um, you know, obviously we'll, we'll follow your lead on what needs to be done to fit the requirements of the new unit being built.
I also wanna add, I, I think I've already mentioned it, I just wanna make sure I don't forget, this is owner-occupied. He, he currently, he's currently living there right now, the single-family walls off.
Any other questions?
Oh, no question.
Thank you, counsel.
Lots, any questions from here?
Nope, good, you guys are good.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone wanna speak in favor of this project? First call, second call, call that part of the hearing closed? Oh, you in favor? Sorry. Do you wanna read in DPW requirements here? Yeah, you can.
That's not so bad.
Trial by fire, yeah, so just, uh, dated, whatever date it is.
Uh, date March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, ninety-one Hamden Circle. Um, we reviewed, from the DPW, we've reviewed this middle for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. Number one, specify how much impervious surf area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Five, upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted, along with a digital file, an elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in a flood zone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna get, opposed or undecided? Do you have a question? You can come up.
Yes, I was ready to be.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. Opposed or undecided?
I have a question.
Yeah, come on up. Name and address for the record again?
Vivian Borick, nine four Newbury Avenue, North Quincy.
Thanks, you, Ms. Borick.
Um, could I see the, uh, first drawing of, of the facade?
Yes, the, uh, front view.
Uh, it had all the views, the other one.
All the elevations, I think they proposed around two separate.
It was on the floor before.
This is the existing, you want the proposed?
Yes. Thank you.
This is just two, uh, informed?
Yeah.
That's two, uh, more elevation that proposed.
Okay, now, is there another one that had?
Same point, see?
Okay, what about this one, proposed east?
Ma'am, you can address the questions to Ross.
Oh, okay, I have a question that I just, it, it gave that the one to the right has a facade that, that looks pretty huge, uh, and, um, it's got one window, and then on the other, on the left quarter with the door, it's got no windows on the left side with the entrance and three windows. I, I find this very strange for a large, uh, for a large, uh, structure, and particularly the one on the right was the proposed, um, it's, it's very strange, it is, um, weird, actually. I, I, we put, the, recently, last year or, or two, there was a, a, a similar building added on Sagamore Street, and there was one little window, and, and, and probably wasn't dressed, and it's just no, it's a facade with no windows. Um, I really think that's strange, and I don't think it makes, you know, the, the city or the neighborhood attractive, um, and, and particularly to have no, no windows to the left of the main entrance, um, but to have really so much.
The side entrance that he's showing now.
The most different is the rear.
Yeah.
The rear, well, just, it's still, you know, four-sided building, I, I, I think it's strange, I, it looks like it's, it would be maybe if it had been, you know, after a war, when something did have chance to get built, it just put, you know, planks up. Um, I, I really would urge that, that they consider it, um, especially for areas you're saying, a, a big, it's gonna be one big structure in that neighborhood, and it won't add to the beauty, it'll, it'll, um, if the rest is new and looks good, it won't, it won't be a plus, in my, in my opinion, and I don't think it'd be hard to add a few windows. So, thank you.
My take, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. Thoughts? Do you wanna initiate?
I just, the, the reason I, I raised the question about the, the connection.
Yeah, yeah.
Is 'cause in general, we don't see those, more like, more of the front additions.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, we don't generally see them when we have a second unit.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that's what, that's what drove me off from that, when I, when I looked at that facade, and then I just raised the issue that, you know, you could probably just take that out, but it doesn't make any difference if they go anywhere, 'cause it'll be back to a single-family, there won't be two-family in the area, you know, two separate individual.
I mean, that's kinda how, I looked at it the same way when I looked at it, and I'm like, why wouldn't you just split the lot and put another single-family in, you know?
Yeah, I, I have, this lovely young lady, I, I agree with her with the certain walls with one window, but the, the diversity from the right to the left, I'd like to see this to look like one building, not one building, but one theme.
Or continuity.
Thank you. So. Perfect word.
I don't disagree with that, I think also, you know, like I said, it's owner-occupied, it's, it's more so for the, they, they also have a budget, because it's not, you know, it's not being done by a developer, um, so we're happy to try to make some accommodations that make it static more appealing, definitely would, would love to do that.
Oh, is it a prefab structure, is that the reason?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the, the existing is not being touched too much.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, he's not really, it's not like he's demoing and doing it all.
Yep.
Um, you know, 'cause he does have some limitations within his thoughts and things like that, but, um, we definitely don't want to, we want to have great curb appeal, um, I certainly do as the builder, um, I can certainly talk to the architect for all recommendations, and I'm happy to, uh, to do those things, add some windows and stuff like that.
Is the additional, is this modular construction?
No.
Okay, so it's pure stick belt? Have you considered doing the front porch to match on the second proposed?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I can talk, certainly talk with the owner and bring that up to him, um, if that's what you all feel is best.
They're so drastically different, it just sticks out to me, I'd like to drive by. Well, yeah, I'd like to drive by and say, oh, okay, it's, it was a house that was built, not, oh, we just added, we added something that looked like this to something that used to look like that, and it just, it doesn't fit, it, it bugs my eyes, I was like.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I know it's additional expensive thing, but is, is anybody opposed, like, the lot size is kinda consistent, uh, and I know if we split the lot, you know, I know what you said, counsel, that it's now I have two tiny. I understand that, but it, in terms of the street, you go up and down the street, and it's, it's pretty consistent with the street in terms of lot size, like, I, would you guys be against seeing this as two single-family homes?
The other one better match the one that's next to it, but yeah, I mean, no, of course I, I'm not, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at lot sizes, yeah, it's, it's narrower in the back than, than the rest of the street, and I think that's what cuts down on its overall square footage, but in terms of frontage on the street, it has the same frontage as every other lot on the street. So, I, I get it, we're telling, you know, but it's resby, you know, we have that problem with res A, that's what we've, we've said about res A, but I, I just, I just think it would, it'd probably save them money, too, in the end, you.
I mean, we're not, we're definitely not opposed to that, I think me and Pat, you know.
Thought this might, yeah.
That's the best idea, it's not waste time.
Yeah, no, no.
We know you guys are just, yeah, we didn't want to waste your time, I looked at the lot sizes, I looked at, you know, you have two families on.
No, I mean, every lot's unique, Pat, and every neighborhood's unique, you know that, so, um, I, I just, I, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to see, I, I, I'd probably prefer it without this odd breezeway.
My client would agree, he wanted to, that was his first initial thought, was to choose a seven, a single family.
What are your thoughts? I mean, before we send them back, I don't, if it's dead on arrival, I don't wanna.
Might, might. Well, I'm, so, let me go back, what, what is, is our, one gonna be a rental, or is he?
It's family.
So, it's all family, so that's why they're hooked.
Yeah, now, yes, now, it's, now it's family, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, down the line, no, so, that's why it's got the connector, is it, it's, it's one group in two different homes. So, I mean, that's kinda the, the determination for the, the owner, is if he wants to have it be a big house that's two-family.
Then I didn't.
Let's make it look like.
A two-family.
It belongs.
Yeah.
And if not, then, I, I would rather see it split than the way it is now, but I, I get the end game, and maybe just, if that's the end game, then that's his choice, and make it look like they belong.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably your recommendation, either come back with a, with a single building that's two-family, or come back with a split lot that shows two singles. Is that all right? And the only other thing I'd like to see, counselor, is, I, I just don't understand, it's, I, I understand it from the lot perspective, and I understand trying to have a bigger backyard, and I get that, but from a lot perspective, I just, I, I don't wanna see it turn in, I, I'd like to see, you know, power out of the street.
Well.
Well, perfect, yeah, power out of the street.
Push it back a little.
Yeah, yeah, man.
And you go push it back a little. Yeah, I appreciate if you would speed that, it's a paper.
And I get the cost, we, we get the cost perspective, and we're not, kind of, it's just. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, that, that's fine, we're perfectly there, I'd rather it be that way.
And I wouldn't even, like, I wouldn't be worried about your, especially your right-side setback when you're looking at that, counselor?
Yep.
Like, obviously, 'cause you own both of those lots right now, so, don't, don't be overly concerned with that right setback, if you're getting, if you're really encroached on it.
You're gonna put it off for, you know, do you wanna put it off a little bit while you guys talk about it with your client, or?
Just so you know, I'm out, I'm out the next meeting, so if, first week of May would.
All of us are out.
Yeah, we have three people.
They need a, they need a survey and subdivide the lot.
Well, you could plan.
If they go that way, just withdraw.
Yeah, you could show the plans right where that are approved.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll take the, um, that first one in May.
Could we do the second one? We have a big agenda in May, can we give you two more weeks after that, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-first.
Is that May twenty-first?
Okay, does that, do you have a date? Is that the twenty-third?
Twenty-first is, yes, May twenty-first. I put my.
That's all right. Yeah, May twenty-first.
We can decide to go with splitting it, then withdraw and do what you wanna do.
I'd like to see, do you wanna make a motion for them?
Yeah.
With the May twenty-first?
Yeah, here's the, uh.
Sam?
Twenty-fourth, yeah. Yeah, um, sure, make a motion on ZBA twenty-four dash twelve, shoe wall ping for a variance finding to convert the existing single-family home into a two-family home on the premises number ninety-one Hamden Circle. I, uh, make a motion to move the, postpone the matter to, uh, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, buddy.
Excellent.
It's like fifteenth year of doing it, I don't know why you need to watch. Next, ZBA twenty-four thirteen, Michael Connors, remodel works LLC for a variance, construct an eight-foot addition and three to four-foot vestibule on the front elevation of the dwelling on the premises number twelve Gladstone Street. Name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Michael Connors, I work for Model Works, located at six twenty-one Main Street in Shrewsbury.
Thank you. You have the floor, tell us what you're trying to do.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you so much for your time. Um, what we're proposing here is to build an eight-foot addition with a three-foot, four-inch vestibule in front of it on the existing non-conforming lot at twelve Gladstone. Um, the, the lots in this neighborhood are all very, very tight. Um, the reason for this request, um, the hardship is, it's a, uh, my client, um, and her boyfriend live at this dwelling, they, uh, plan on living there forever, it's, it's their primary residence, and it's just a very, very tight house as it is. Um, they, you know, we've been actually talking to them for the last three years, COVID kinda, um, stopped the first iteration of this project in its tracks, um, so, um, they've recently regrouped and re-engaged us, and we've, we've done some preliminary designs, as you've seen, um, got the plot planned done, we found that, you know, all of the, the sides and the front are existing non-conforming, um, we're only asking for relief in the front, as you can see, and, um, I just wanted to point out, uh, you can see in the assessors' plan, and I took a photo of the, um, the house immediately to the west, it's not without precedent to have a house, um, very close to the lot line, I'm not sure if you guys can see this, but, um, that's the house immediately to the west of it, it's on the corner lot, but in my experience, when you've had a house on a corner lot, you typically beholden to having the same setbacks, um, as if you have two front yards, and that one is very, very close to the lot, as you can see there, um, it's on the corner of Gladstone and Bellevue. So, that is the relief we're asking for, again, it's an eight-foot addition, um, with a three-foot, four-inch vestibule, um, the necessity for the vestibule is because the lots of prography kinda slopes down towards the street, um, so we would need stairs to, to access the, the front entrance, that's the main entrance to the house. We're not proposing any changes to the driveway, um, the rear, the, the left side, anything else like that, it's just, um, adding onto the front, two stories with a, um, with a deck kind of on top of the flat roof.
Get a nice view from up there.
Oh, it's beautiful, it's, it's facing the water, and it's kinda positioned perfectly right between the, the two neighbor, the two houses across the street, so you get a straight view. We're also, it's worth noting, um, we're proposing to do this on helical peers, so we have minimal impact to, it, obviously, it's a tight lot, we would have nowhere if we were to dig conventionally to, to stockpile materials, it would, it would have a much more adverse effect on the neighborhood, so, um, to minimize that, we're gonna have So, um, to minimize that, we're going to have it, um, structurally engineered with helical piers.
So the only thing in the front there, when you come out, you're expanding the the first floor living area, expanding the bedroom on the second floor.
That's correct.
And then just the deck above that.
Correct. Where there's a, you can see in this photo, there's a window here. You convert that into a sliding door to have access to that that deck. That's the only proposed plan on the third floor.
And there's already the existing dormer, so.
Exactly, yeah. And it's a finished attic space now. It's it's living space up there now.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I don't.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
You can have a seat. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. The notes from the DPW, that's all right. We've reviewed this middle for the above friends for its project, and we have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. Nice addition, simple. It it aligns with the street. My my uncle lives on the street. There's, his house is literally on the on on the sidewalk.
Most of us are your neighbors. I think it's, I think it.
Yeah, it'll be a nice addition.
Catch is going to be terrific. It's going to look very slick.
Yeah, and that deck's going to be perfect on the street. Do you want to? I did.
Okay, okay. We both missed it.
Yeah, yeah, no. Nobody came up. Yeah, no, we're taking it either way.
Never mind.
What's that? Go ahead.
Uh, call for vote, ZB A two-four dash one-three, twelve Gladstone Street.
This is what the variance.
Michael Connors, Remodel Works LLC for varies to construct an eight-foot addition in a three to four-foot vestibule on the front elevation of the dwelling on the premises numbered twelve Gladstone Street, Quincy. And motion to approve?
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you, watch.
Thank you.
Next, ZB A twenty-four fourteen, JCBT Architect for a variance construction addition with a two-car attached garage on the third floor on the premise numbered one nineteen East Quantum Street, Quincy. As the applicant or the representative here, how are you? Yeah, take your time. I'm just going to do it from now on. Save paper, kill less trees, save some postage. I've been asking for for years and. Everybody else is fine.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Schiff and members of the board. My name's Jim Chen, uh, of JCBT Architect, uh, for the record, uh, thirty-eight Billings Road.
Thank you, sir.
So the subject property, uh, tonight is, uh, one eleven East Quantum Street. Uh, it's located in the corner of, uh, East Quantum and Clock Street. It's a corner lot. It's currently a gable-style, uh, two-and-a-half-story with frame construction. Uh, it's located in res B zoning district. Lot size is approximately three thousand six hundred twenty-nine square feet. Uh, surrounded by multi-families, uh, residential properties in the area. Um, the applicant is seeking to expand the living square footage for the family and sort of redesign this, uh, gable roof to be a Vansar roof style. Um, building, um, a s- single family and still will will remain a single family. Um, it's currently owner-occupied. Uh, the existing structure is currently about, uh, a little bit less than nineteen hundred, uh, gross living square footage. And the proposed growth, uh, living area is slightly over, uh, four thousand one hundred square feet with four bedrooms and, uh, six floor bath. Uh, we're proposing to have a two-car garage attached, um, facing, uh, Clock Street. So the basement will, uh, remain unfinished in the, uh, for, uh, storage and mechanical use. The the owner has been, uh, purchased this property back in two thousand eighteen, and and they intended to live there, uh, for the rest of their life. So the, uh, the property, um, i- is right at the corner, so i- it does have two front yard setbacks. Um, the front yard setback facing East Quantum Street, uh, will remain the same. But the, um, uh, the the front yard setback facing Clock Street will will reduce back to, uh, nine-point-eight feet. Uh, we're we're seeking, uh, variance for a minimum, uh, front yard, side yard setback, and the F A yard. And, um, in addition, I'm finding for the existing, uh, non-conforming, uh, lot size. So, um, uh, I'm open for any questions from the board.
Anyone?
I should write something down. It sure looks different.
Yeah, it does. Is it, so the, that your existing garden and everything stays, right? So your, the front garden is all.
That's it.
That's it. So good, because that's nice. So it's just, yeah, it's fifteen feet behind that, right-ish, somewhat, ten? And then the addition just pumps out right to there?
The addition is mostly the the garage portion, um, popular of of Clock Street.
Yeah.
This is only one-story issue.
And then that three-story is just adding living space inside? And you're leaving the the existing carport?
The carport will be demo.
Okay. But leave the driveway up there for additional parking?
Correct.
Okay.
So you just want to put a deck on where the cars are everybody?
Correct. I'm sorry.
And you walk back three floors in the back behind that.
On the main house.
You're going to finish the curb cut there? It's like, it's, yeah, it's like flattened out over the years. Just pull it out of it. Any questions? Mr. Chen?
Just seems like a sizable addition going up to six full bathrooms.
Six baths, one.
Nineteen.
Just don't know why you need six full bathrooms in a house this size.
The, uh, they have the room for it, so, you know, it's, I mean, the the third floor is consisting of one big master bedroom and a, and a, uh, and a master bathroom. And and the third, the second floor is three bedrooms and three baths. They want sort of a unsweet, uh, unit.
For each bedroom?
For each bedroom, right.
So that'd be four, then two on the first floor?
Two full baths on the full first floor?
No, first floor, we have one, one full bath. Standing shop.
So that was five.
There's two on, there's two on, no, there's one in the playroom up here.
Oh, that's.
Was the open playroom?
So two full baths on the third floor?
So first floor, we have one full bath, which, uh, second floor is, uh, three bedrooms. Three bedroom, three baths. So each, each bedroom will have a, you know, one suite here. And then the, uh, yeah, the third floor will have a master suite and a playroom area with a, with a bath is, with a bath. For total six baths.
Playroom pretty easily be converted. How do you look, Frank?
It's also resby. It's also resby. Could be a two-family.
And also the owner has no intention to do it yet. If they have to write an affidavit for it, they're happy to do that. And I just want to bring up in addition to the, uh, um, we have, the owner actually got six, um, support letters from the director.
Do we have those?
For the rep.
Okay, we'll read it.
We have four. One, two, three, four. Four there, more.
There's a total of five.
Assistant, Assistant Counselor, require a neighborhood meeting?
They didn't request one. Uh, I did, I did send a message, uh, email to them, and, uh.
There's no living?
So it's the fourth place, meaning that's.
So in addition to the two-car garage, is there additional parking on this, on the site as well?
Um.
Or is the total parking?
Currently, the parking right here, so that that parking space will be maintained.
So that's one?
That's one, and then to- total of two additional in garage.
So you have three existing bedrooms. You're adding one bed.
Correct. Big, big.
Yeah. And two existing baths?
Correct.
Spend a lot of time in the bath?
I'll be.
Any other questions for now?
No, right now.
Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call. We have these all in favor?
Yep.
They're all the same letter, so I will just read it once and then we'll read the names on. So, single-family addition, one nineteen East Quantum. As a neighbor and a butter of the property, I am in support of the development project. So, Tim Chan Sato, one twenty-nine East Quantum Street. Suzanne Yu, twenty-one Clark Street. Sing Yu, eleven Clark Street. Ju Jing Li, one fifteen East Squam Street. And Ka Feng Chen, ninety-four B East Squam Street. These are the same, same names, okay. Is anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call, third call closed. Comments? It's a big house.
Huge.
Resby.
It's resby, though. You know, I mean, uh, I think it's a better use of the property personally. Are you concerned about it turning into a two-family and saying it's not? I mean, either way, it could be approved as a two-family. But you need the additional egress anyways, which he doesn't have.
He's not.
So.
You also have to get the setbacks that he doesn't have to to get what he wants, two-family.
I mean, it's the same setback.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. I mean, parking requirements are changing.
It's doubling the size of the house, which I'm still trying to wrap my head around.
Yeah, but from an exterior standpoint, yeah, you're putting a third story on it, which is allowed. So if he didn't put that, so if he did it by right, and he just put a third story on it, wouldn't it be allowed in resby? Probably, it'd be close, yeah. So there'd be no existing front addition. That's the piece that you'd lose. So you'd lose, what, you know, two, four, six hundred square feet of the house.
They're they're losing, they're losing up to where that tree planter is, with that, I mean, there's no grass there except for that front.
What's, Jim, what, Jim, what's the, uh, your dimensions of your, like, exterior, where you just write two-story addition right there? A three-story addition, I'm sorry.
This, this one here?
Yeah, what do you think that is? I'm like, I would try to. Which is just kind of cornering off the house. It's not big.
That portion is about nine feet and a half by. Sorry. Nine feet and a half by fourteen.
So you. Yeah, so it's a thousand square feet, so like, uh, and then you, you know, also the garage, you'd lose that. And by right, you could go throw the third story on it and not have this.
The garage and the deck on top of it.
Yeah, what looks like a beautiful structure on a, a different lot now, you know, as opposed to just a third story or something. I mean, I don't, I know, I get it. You live in a big house, too.
Yeah, it's three times the size.
Only because it was a church there.
It was a rectory.
I mean, I I I think it's a unique situation. I'm in favor of it. I I think it's a, it'll, I mean, it'll look like a nice house. It, not like it doesn't now, but it'll look like a really nice house. So I'll be in favor.
Uh, in favor?
I'm in favor as well.
How you doing, Mr. Allen?
You're all.
I don't know.
No, I might not be, right?
I'm still thinking.
You know, the, you know, the distraction I have is the sixth bathroom, the bathroom on the top floor, second bathroom.
Want to remove it? If I remove that, you in favor with a big structure and four, and five bathrooms?
The size doesn't bother me because it's a corner lot. I mean, that's in the height, you stay within the height.
Yeah, the extra bathroom doesn't make it.
Doesn't bother you?
Doesn't bother you.
Doesn't.
Just me.
You're making an apartment on the third floor. It's going to happen, it's going to happen anyway, but I don't, it's not what I'm here for.
I mean, you're not like, you're not de- developing a structure like this to to make it an apartment use. Not the current owner, maybe the next owner, but we won't be on this board.
How do you know?
I'm not seeing another, uh, eclipse, I'll tell you that much.
I said that yesterday. It's my last one.
Good.
Bring it up.
Want to call for a vote?
Sure. Uh, call for vote, ZB A two-four dash one-four, JCBT Architects for a variance to construct an addition with a two-car attached garage. Third floor on the premises numbered one nineteen East Quantum Street, Quincy. Motion to grant?
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? So moved. Hey, Jim, I'm right back up at you. Twenty-four, ZB A twenty-four dash fifteen, JCBT Architect for a variance to the mall at the existing side enclosed porch and construct a two-and-a-half-story single-family home to the left side of the property on the num- on the premise number twenty-three Baltoc Street.
Good evening, Kim Chen, uh, of JCBT Architect, for the record, twelve thirty-eight Billings Road. Um, so this subject property at twenty-three Baltoc, uh, Street is currently a single-family structure. Um, it's also in the resby zoning district, sits on a nine thousand four hundred square feet of lot size. Um, so what what we're proposing to do is, um, to keep the existing single-family, uh, where it is. And then the portion of the left side of the property will be dealt on this part, which is a, uh, open, uh, is a covered, uh, porch. Um, and then what we're proposing is a new single-family, uh, to the left side of the property. Uh, this will consider two lots, uh, two building on one lot. And the lot size is quite, um, large for for the area. Um, so, so the proposed footprint of the, uh, uh, structure is eight hundred eighty-seven square feet with approximately twenty-two hundred, uh, of living space. The first floor will contain a open living space. So this is the existing structure that we're maintaining. Um, this part will be dealt to get that, uh, setback from the, the, the old building. And this is a new structure, also a single-family. Uh, first floor will be open, uh, concept with a, with a living room and a bedroom and full bath. And then the second floor will have a three-bedroom and two-bathrooms. And, uh, the attic will just be empty. So what we're seeking, uh, variances for excessive F A R, front yard setback, and the number of parking spaces. Um, and also two buildings on one lot. And the proposed project will consider a, a, uh, two-and-a-half-story. Um, will have a new curb cut at, to the left side of the, uh, the lot. Uh, with a, uh, you know, sort of a tenant parking, uh, for two spaces, uh, dedicated to the new single-family. Um, we'll also need, uh, conservation commission approval, um, for this, um, proposal since we're, half of the rear lot will, is in the, uh, wetland buffer zone. Um, the existing structure will, will keep, will maintain the two additional, two existing, um, spaces here. So that covers the single family and then two additional for this, this one, total of four parking spaces. So I I I do believe that this, uh, proposal is, is, um, you know, quite consistent with the, uh, surrounding neighborhood. So, um, I I wouldn't think it's any detrimental to to the surroundings, so I'm open up for any questions. And, um, a- additional comment is that, uh, I'm not sure if you guys were on the board back, uh, two, three, about two, two years ago, we did a proposal with, uh, three townhouses, uh, which was quite large and significant, uh. And and that was, wasn't seen, uh, well with the, uh, the board. So we're coming back again with the, uh, a different proposal two years later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Conservation. I gotta go to conservation?
Yeah.
If they really go to conservation, you're putting on the list.
Did you go to con, con comment?
We have not by.
I mean, technically, there's no rule against them coming here first in our. They do? That's so, that's different?
If this will apply for a security, they'll probably go to conservation.
Okay. So we need, or you have to come here first?
You have, you have to either buy or get the permit. Yep, you have to either buy or get the permit. Then you can go to government before you go to court.
Okay. Okay.
And then, was there, is additional with two houses on one lot, okay?
There is an issue with two houses on one lot.
Right. Because in the past, we rejected them, self-accordingly, a couple of times.
Yep, when we had those, especially when those long stretches of lots.
That's.
That's a question for Jim.
Again, try to be consistent.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, they, I...
Condos are different.
But.
You mentioned that you think it's gonna be pretty consistent with the other, uh, lots in the neighborhood. Which, which lots have, um, two structures on one lot?
Uh, uh, I was referring to the size and, and the, uh, the use. But, uh, in, in that neighborhood, I, I haven't seen any two, two houses on one.
That's right, I was looking through on your, on your map, I couldn't see any.
So, again, kind of same, same conversation that we just had with a couple previous.
Yeah.
This one's almost the opposite, like, was there any, uh, I mean, it's resby, was there any reason you didn't do a two-family? As opposed to trying to apply for the two separate structures?
The, uh, the app can actually wants to keep that existing structure untouched, and then, uh, the new structure will be owner-occupied, um, by the parents.
Thank you.
Now.
Oh, I have one, there's a lot line in the middle here. Is that, that a sub lot? That was, that was a two blocks upon time?
That I'm not sure, but, uh, I, I do believe it's a, uh, it's just an imaginary line, yeah.
It was combined.
It used to be, it used to be two separate lot, I do think. But right now, it's combined as one.
Because of unity of ownership.
Yeah.
And that's, that's generally, that's the only reason, that's how I keep coming back to this all the time because it's, but it's B, he could separate the bodies and just go back to the old lot for the second lot, you know, for the second house on that lot.
Yeah, we did that with the one on, in Montclair, a couple.
Right, yep. And then, the one down in, uh, the neck.
Yeah.
You know, we split, uh, I can't remember the name of the street, Burris Street.
Yeah.
Where we split that, that was a big giant house, a comfortable box, and when he took it down, he go back to the property lines.
Yeah, because I mean, then you're, you're looking at, you're not, I mean, like, those lots to the, both to the north and south, or, yeah, it would, probably east and west, but are, uh, are both smaller than both of those lots.
Yeah.
This is one-one. One-one.
Four-nine. It's on a separate lot.
This is, they have to, uh, uh. One-one-two. At least it's, yes, at least it's consistent. Yeah.
You're just, yeah.
What, um? Thoughts?
The, um, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay.
But, yeah, yeah. You can have a second.
Can I just add one more?
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, I, I do, I do believe that the owner is more, uh, preferable to, if we can subdivide it, but...
Because of where the house is.
Yeah, with, with the subdivision, that will leave the existing house to probably like a zero lot, lot.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to move it and have a very narrow second house.
Right, right.
Like a shotgun house.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you just, your right setback is gonna be nothing.
Yeah, just add to your variance.
And your lot, so the, the lot that would be adjacent to that is the same thing, it's that odd structure, you know, and it's, it's probably the same size. You know, point nine of an acre, that's probably what you'd end up with, somewhere around there, point eight, point nine of an acre. All right, thanks, Jim. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, want to name an address for the record when you have a chance, please?
Kevin Chen, uh, I'm actually the owner of the, the building.
Okay.
But I, I don't live there, my parents, currently my parents live there.
Okay.
Uh, a few years ago, where I bought, I bought this property, it was intended to like be developed, you know, and then, uh, I move out of the town, and my parents moved in.
Okay.
And the only request my mom wants is they have a first, first floor bedroom and bathroom, just currently, we have like a wider stair on the old house.
Okay.
That's why we want to build a new house.
For them, so they have access there?
Yeah, and the second floor is my sister, they live in Hong Kong with two kids, and they come back here every summer.
Okay.
Four months.
Okay.
That, that was the intent, and I don't have issue with subdividing if you guys, uh, you know, like, approve that.
Okay.
You know, you know, though, you know.
And your existing house now, that your parents are in that house today?
Yeah.
And you, the, the new house that you build, that's where your parents would move into?
And the, the house that they're gonna, they live now, it's probably gonna be rental, it's gonna keep it in the family.
Okay.
Just in case my sister wants to move back.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the owner? Second call? Jim, are you in favor? Okay, third call closed? I'll read it out. I'll save you on this. Yeah, we'll come back, we just, um, dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, from Chen Sang, civil engineer, twenty-three Baltoff case, ZBA twenty-four dash fifteen. We reviewed this middle for the above referenced project, and our comments always follows. One, two separate single-family homes in one lot. How are the values of the land and the house assessed? Will there be any utility easement or access easement needed? Will there be any condominium formed? Two, specify how much impervious area will be increased to the development? Three, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility grading, drainage, and construction details. Four, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Five, install, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Eight, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Nine, upon completion of the project as built plan, showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with the digital file. Further information is required, please advise. Where's the easement? Was there any easement on it?
There's no easement.
Would there be acting, we should.
No, it's public, I, it's right there, I don't know. Opposed or undecided? Do you have a question? You can stand up, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vivian Svoita Bor, I'm in ninety-four Newbury Ave.
Thank you, Ms. Bor.
And I'm about Kitty Corner and very, almost across the street on the side from, from this property. So my, my questions are, uh, it would be really helpful to see the, this proposed proportions of the addition, so I don't know if that is, um, available on the other drawings, if, if he could just show the, the others, uh...
So this is a full plan for the existing structure, it's three main. Uh, portion of this side is a enclosed porch, gonna have to double that. But all interior spaces. This is a new structure, single-family. Uh, we have the front, upper entrance here, going into a bathroom, and then an open concept of kitchen, dining area. And they have a bedroom here, full bath.
Don't that be the same height as the other, the house?
Uh, that's for the height, I'll show you the elevation. So it's a, it's a two-and-a-half-story, um, it's actually facing the, uh, Baltoff Street. We don't have a, uh, elevation for the original house, but it will be the similar height, it's also a two-and-a-half-story.
Is that the addition?
This, this is a new single-family to the left, uh, of these, this, this one. The, the, uh, existing house, in reference to that, is right.
Also, there's a right-hand space and stairs?
Yes, there will tend to be, stay between the house.
Okay, that, that's, that's very helpful, but now this is, uh...
This is the side.
Side, right?
That's the front. And that's the, uh, side, the right side. And this is a rear, the rear sort of drops back, uh, down further. So in the back, you'll, you'll see a three-story.
In the back, right, this is big. It's a big drop in the hill.
It's about ten feet, though, yep.
And where this is at now, where, where this is at now?
If I show you where.
Show.
So, uh, the existing house, right here, in reference to that, that is gonna be pushed back further, um, in comparison to the, uh, current house, and then longer. So.
So what's supposed to be is here?
Yeah, Baltoff.
And, and this is the, the rest?
No, no, this, this stays here.
Okay.
And the post-single-family is going to be pushed back.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you show me on this picture where, um, how far it would extend from this, where, where it is now?
There's no, it wouldn't be in it, does not touch the existing lot.
But the, this part, existing portion, we're building.
Okay, and then, so what would be the, the, now? Like, wouldn't cover all the trees, for example, from just looking at it?
Well, all these trees will be taken down for this construction, to that.
Okay, but I think, um, some of this is looking at the conservation land.
Correct.
So like, so say that the open lot is this big.
Yeah.
It helps, if I can visualize it, maybe the others too, uh, how long will the, you know, if you're walking by it, this now is an empty space.
Correct.
So how much of that is gonna be empty anymore?
So between the existing house and the new house, it's gonna be ten feet.
Yeah.
Ten, ten feet.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're trying to ask.
I'm just trying to get in terms of the size.
Of the house?
Uh, yeah, in terms of the portions of the house going on. In the past few years, there's been some renovations of, of extended porches. There've been some expanded porches right, right along here, I come, go by the property every day.
Yeah.
And this is so across the street, I mean, I'll miss seeing the conservation land, but I was just wondering, what, what is the footprint from, from the street of, of this new house?
The setback, is what you're asking, how far back?
How far back, but on the width? How long it is? In other words, uh, further, a couple of years ago, this, uh, on Batesville Road at the corner of East Squonam, one house had a huge yard, and it was huge enough that they built a second house, but it was very well done. It was huge enough, they made a nice house, there was land, I mean, it didn't look like someone's
Jammed it in.
barn unit or something. And, and, and so I was, I, they did a good job with that. I'm, I'm just concerned about the spacing and the breathability and the, the openness. I, I, I love having a family all together these days, but, um, I'd like to try to make it so that the environment, physical environment looks good in proportion with, with the social needs.
I'm just saying, you know, the existing space is forty-two feet right now, that's...
Oh, oh, down?
Wide, from the corner of his house right now, today, that vacant lot that you look at?
It's forty-two feet.
Forty-two feet.
Okay.
This house would take up twenty-five of it.
Plus, it's, it's, according to the plan, it's about thirty feet long.
Which, I, I don't, it's hard to...
So, ten feet off the screen.
Okay, with a little further down.
Thirty feet long into the, into the much.
Okay, so it sounds like it's, there's gonna be a space in between the two houses.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, that wasn't totally clear to me, and, um, I was thinking of a huge addition, and wondering what the proportions were. Um, so this is very helpful, so it sounds good to me. Um, and I want to say as an aside, is it possible for the board to, um, I don't know, give a little visual of, of, you know, what the, what the footprint is of something? It really helps.
Sure.
That I don't have to come and say, well, you know, is it, is it gonna be seven hundred eighty-one feet up here or this way?
Sure.
And you just get a lot.
I think we get so used to seeing them, you know, in the plans that we all receive, and we all drive by the properties and go look at them and take the time to try and, you know, understand what the impacts are, so that's what we do as a board, so we probably take for granted sometimes what that project may look like to us, so we certainly can appreciate that comment. And maybe one day, we'll be able to show it up on the screen right here.
Yeah, no, there's this one there, this, this one there. And so I, I think that's where I'm, I'm coming from, I, I really care about my environment as well as the town.
So you can always find our plans online as well, too, so all the plans are submitted online as well.
Okay. And if I had a question about what I'm asking, that might not need your whole time, but just one person, what is the best way to do it? To call, uh, I mean, I know I wouldn't call the, the day of, but...
No, you can always filter questions.
Call the zoning clerk, which is me.
Kathleen.
I'm Kathleen, yeah, I would do my best to walk you through it, although I am a novice at reading lands.
I called, like, I called you today, but of course, today is not a, a good day to expect an answer. But I wasn't sure what the procedure was, you know, for your, your responsibilities. Because something like that, I could answer and not have to come.
Yeah.
But, uh...
The easiest way actually to accomplish that is if you had a question and wanted to call me, if you had a computer and you were logged on at the same time as I was logged on, we could walk through it together and I could hopefully help you understand best.
A, a lot of it is visual, and so I must have photographs.
Yeah, no, they're, they're usually required to submit them with photographs, and that's why I'm, I'm looking at them here, you know, the whole time. I'm not, I'm not browsing the internet.
He's not on Facebook.
Okay, that's...
Thank you, Ms. Bor. Any other concerns on this?
No, I really appreciate your time and attention. Maybe I'll come in person, maybe I won't, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? So please come on up. Just your name and address for the record?
Uh, Hugo Kwan, uh, twenty-nine Baltoff Street.
Sure.
Uh, my question is sort of similar, I was just asking about the other side, because I'm, I'm the neighbor to that.
Right?
Yeah, and I just want to know how much space.
So you're facing right or left, sorry?
Um, right, left.
Left, so the new house would be
Yeah, right next.
On your side?
Yes, I'm just wondering, is there any space between?
Yeah, so...
Their driveway? What would be their driveway, and would it be right up next to our property line? Or would there be any space?
So the, the, the house would be built, he wasn't asking for a side variance on the left side, was he? I don't think...
I was assuming there was a driveway.
Yeah, so there's a driveway, but we consider, we only consider the building as, as, as the setback, so there's thirteen and a half feet from the building.
Okay.
So the problem.
Yeah, that's right.
Of which the majority is the driveway.
Of which is driveway, yeah.
So about three feet between the driveway and your property line.
Okay, and does that driveway go, pavement go all the way just down the side of the house or?
No, there's a strip, there's a strip.
Oh, okay, it's...
Right there.
Okay.
It's hard to...
You can see it.
I'll show you right here. So, your property is over here, so we have a three-foot buffer for parking, a landstate area toward your house. And then this, this is a roll of asphalt with two pockets.
Okay, so there's a fence between our properties, yeah? Left by like the previous, previous, previous owner, would that still be there or would that be gone?
That would probably be the place.
Okay.
Can we make that a condition if we did?
But no fence?
I, I, I'm, I'm not harsh with the fence either way, I just want to know if it's still there or not.
I mean, if you want it, you tell us, you're the director of order, if you want a fence, we'll say that.
No, no, I don't care if the fence...
Would you like a different fence, not a paint?
Whether the fence is there or not, I, I don't mind, I, I'm just curious if it's gonna be taken up or...
I mean, it is right near, you know, there, you, you're, it's right in the living area there, so if you wanted, you know, if, if you wanted vinyl fence there, and it's vinyl fence, we could make that a condition. I'm serious.
No, no, the fence isn't necessary.
Okay. We could make bushes, yeah.
My, my parents are like, had a few bushes out there.
They like, yeah, so bushes, yes, um, we can ask for some more. All right, any other concerns?
No.
Awesome, thank you. Real quick?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, um, I want to, uh, see if I could see that, very quickly, the, the, the new facade?
Yep.
Please. I know windows, apparently bad side of windows are their, their heat thing, there's an economical side to it too. But I, I hope to see that there was gonna be some, yeah, and is that, what is this side? So this is the side that people are gonna see?
They'll see both sides.
Yeah, but on the side, you, it goes to both sides. My, my suggestion as strong is, is add some more windows, because it looks, it really looks like a barn. And, um, that's my thought, I, please, I don't know how to make it, if you have to, as, but, please, add a, a couple of windows, because, um, it, it, it just...
Thank you.
It works better for aesthetically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thoughts? No, anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call closed? Thoughts?
Subdivide the lots.
Yeah, I, I, Jim, I wouldn't be in favor of it with, without a subdivision.
The two houses.
You can create a, if there's acres of it in there, but subdivide the lots.
Yeah, I, I just, it, it's too wonky the way it is, you know, with two houses on one lot, and, you know, probably not for him as he, you know, continues to own both of them, but you never know what the future holds.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, what you want to do is you just want to change the name on one of them. And that way, there's not human, the user, if he have the size installed, he can do.
And again, it's, it's the similar, it's similar situation to the last three, you know, it's, it's, it, it kind of aligns with the lots right there, like, the, the lot to your right is, you know, point one-two of an acre, the lot to your left is point nine of an acre. You, you're gonna have, you have two small lots, but it kind of aligns with right where you are on that corner of that street.
Plus, if it'll fall to the subdivision way from that area when it was subdivided a hundred and fifty years ago.
Yeah, when somebody wants to, uh, you know, get rid of that existing dwelling and build a new one and move it to the right, it'll look perfect. Mind, redrawn, coming back?
And if, if the board is leaning toward that direction?
I think that's, I think that's... And I think we'll, we'll see in favor of this one, we should just...
I think that the owner is more favorable to subdivision.
So let's, let's come back at the end of May, do you mind?
Yeah.
May seventh? May seventh is, uh...
Two different, two different lots and two different setback, it's gonna be two cases, I think it's...
Why is it two applications?
Two separate properties.
You subdivide...
Then he's gonna have...
But you don't have, the, the existing family, we don't have to approve that.
Well, it's gonna be right on the line.